We're upstairs in closed session and administrative function session. First thing is for this evening's consent agenda, we'll be removing item A on the consent agenda and we will be, no, sorry, item B on the consent agenda and dealing with the appointments to the Committee on the Environment as a separate agenda item, and we will do that after the consent agenda. And then as far as future agendas, a couple of things to point out. A reminder that a week from today, Monday, January 21st, city offices will be closed for the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, which is also the day of the inauguration. Tuesday, the 22nd, we have a number of items on election issues. We have a presentation and work session discussion. We also have a work session discussion on revisions to the city code to address food vendors, and then we have the larger piece of the work session, which is our opening discussion of financial matters and budget priorities. The following Monday, the 28th of January, we have a presentation from State Highway Administration, and that's a briefing on bridge replacements. And then we have, among other things, work session discussions continuing on financial matters and budget priorities, and a discussion of the large grant requests. Monday, February 4th, wanted to make sure that people know that we have a, it's listed as tentative. Are we firm on the Center for Watershed Protection Report on Maple Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not tentative. That's definitely on February 4th. And also a discussion of sidewalks in the historic district. So that takes us about another month out with identifying some of the key things that people might want to know about in advance. I don't have anything for the record, so we will move to public comment. And we'll be happy to take comments from anybody in public about any topic that is not on our voting agenda this evening, so if you, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three nuts. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I wanted to thank, to continue what we do about gun control. I was thinking over the weekend if Tacoma Park could ban weapons outright, and I wish they could. And also, I want to thank Mayor Williams for joining Mayors Against Illegal Guns. I'm so glad to see that. And another thing coming up is some demonstrations I'd like to see people get involved in on the inaugural. On the, on Saturday...
At 9:00.
Or 10:00, we're going to be starting these demonstrations.
March.
As much as a drone. And I'd like to see people get involved in. And on Monday, they're going to be having the March for March of Justice, called the Ark of Justice. We're marching from Malcolm X Park down to K Street at the agenda. I mean, that's going to be our agenda. It's going towards the inaugural. We're going to end at K Street. And I'd like to see if we can get Tacoma Park fully involved in this now, because what affects our country affects our city. What we can do in our city, health, pay to do the same thing. And I'd like to see everything we can. And also, I'd like to ask the city council, next time they join the MML meeting, whenever they have the next meeting, I'd like if they could ask other mayors and other jurisdictions if they could, if they could also appoint a peace delegate in their area. That would be great, because if we can get a lot of this going on, it's going to be so great. And that's one way I think we could start affecting things nationally if we put our heads together locally, and that would be great. You know, we'd be able to avoid some corruption possibly, because we're watching what goes on when you say, what's affecting us in the city council. And also, next, this coming November, not next November, not last November, but this coming November, there's going to be another election here in Tacoma Park. It's going to be a local election, and it's a very, very important election. Very important. We need to get other people involved. And I'd like to thank Doris for the work she's done for me, Doris Thompson. She's making it possible for me to participate in these things by keeping my health at bay. And I'd like to thank her today. She's the one who put this ponytail in, in case you know. She really cares for me. But I'd like to ask the city, again, do what we can to stop these guns, and please get, again, start getting people registered to vote. It's never too early now. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Is there other public?
I want to thank everybody for what they're doing, and continue doing the work for peace.
Is there other public comment?
I hope so.
Okay, seeing none, we will move to council comments. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to give my thanks to the people who organized the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration that took place in Tacoma Park last Saturday, on the 12th of January, a week early, to meet, beat the rush, but would like to thank the Tacoma United for an engaged community, CHEER Tacoma Park Community Action Group, and the Tacoma Park Recreation Department for all their work in organizing it, running it, and serving the people there at the event. It was very nice. It was actually a full day of work. They had service day projects from morning through afternoon, and then in the afternoon they had an event for the young people, learning how to do various craft projects. And in the evening, it was a potluck dinner with Senator Raskin as the emcee, and it was a super event. D.C. Labor Choir came and led the singing. Children from Piney Branch Elementary School were there, reciting the "I Have a Dream" speech, and it was a fantastic evening with a lot of good food. And I'd like to thank everybody who...
G-Force did.
Oh, that's right, the G-Force Step Ministry was there also. So, and anybody else that I forgot, I'm sorry, but it was a great event, and I hope everybody considers coming next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I've allowed councilmember Seaman to steal my thunder, but I also participated or was able to go to the event on Saturday, and this is a Martin Luther King Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Quote, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." And this past Saturday, my "I Have a Dream" speech came true again, because one more time, I had to be, I had the opportunity to be in the presence of a whole lot of love. There was a special showing of warmth and care at Tacoma Park, engaging the dream, celebrating Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and I call it a festival, because it was the energy surrounding it. An incredible undertaking by a group of Tacoma Parkers plus others, who decided to make this happen for the second time in our fair city. There were so many volunteers cleaning up the wooded area between the Steve Francis Basketball Court and Public Works. They were able to save many canopy trees from invasive ivy and other vines. Saturday night, at the wrap-up celebration, there were over 200 folks of all ages, sizes, shapes, and ethnicity, breaking bread and listening to some great performances by the D.C. Labor Chorus and the G-Force Step dancers, plus so much more. And one more time, my heart was moved by hearing the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech being read out by about 25 Piney Branch Elementary School children. It always brings a tear to my eye and warmth to my soul, but I also listened, and this was pretty incredible. It was like, it felt like being in a time warp, actually, listening to Lewis Zapata and Coco Barnes, who actually worked in the civil rights movement. I looked around the room, and I said, you know, I don't know how many of the people here actually participated in the civil rights movement of the late 60s, or the late 50s, and all through the 60s, but they were able to share many of their experiences. They were up close and personal with Reverend King, and one spent a lot of time in Mississippi registering voters, and the other one spent a lot of time in the Washington metropolitan area. Jamie Raskin was also a wonderful emcee, with special, very special stories of his own. He was still a bit young, though he was a babe in arms during the Martin Luther King "I Have a Dream" speech at the Lincoln Memorial and Reflecting Pool. And I guess, one more time, the most moving moment was singing "We Shall Overcome" with closed eyes, and everyone holding hands and swaying. It brought a tear to my eye and warmth to my heart, and I really got that maybe we will all begin to live in a nation where people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character, and it may even be in my lifetime. Last evening was that kind of a moment. I was humbled and proud to have had a chance to be a part of it for a second year, and I'm looking forward to many more inspiring moments like that. Huge gold stars go to Tacoma United for an engaged community, CHEER Tacoma Community Action Group, and the Tacoma Park Recreation Department for partnering up one more time and opening a space for each of us who are there to feel the presence of such great commitment. And super gold stars to all the volunteers who helped save our tree canopy. Now, what was really remarkable, more remarkable stuff, I'm told there was one council member and his family who helped save the trees and picked up trash, and at the dinner, there were actually four council members present. We had to stay away from each other, so we weren't, we were a true quorum, we couldn't. I volunteered to actually leave and go watch the Ravens game, but I stayed anyhow. So, it was, it was, it was pretty fabulous moment in time, and I invite everyone to pay attention to when it happens next year, because it will move your heart. Thank you.
Councilmember May.
Thank you, Mayor. Just commenting on the cleanup, the litter pickup, and the vine removal. I've heard the city, either the Public Works Director or maybe the Arborist, talked before about us running out of places to plant trees, and it strikes me that there's plenty of space in that area between the middle school and the fields and ultimately Maple Avenue. There's a bunch of places where it's all invasives and not much tree canopy. The other issue I wanted to comment about, a few weeks ago, or before our break, I suppose, we talked about the issue of the traffic restrictions on Ritchie Avenue. And at that time, one of the biggest issues, at least for me, was the issue of parents and staff trying to access a nursery school, for which access is made more difficult by the signs. And I know that the, some of the parents and the staff of the nursery school had met with an officer from the police department. In addition, I had spoken to the acting city manager beforehand, and then also asked at the meeting about the issue of whether a system had been worked out for parents to still be able to use Ritchie Avenue and other streets to get to the nursery school. And in all those meetings, the sense that I got quite directly was that yes, there was going to be a system, and those parents were not going to be ticketed or cited, and that we didn't need stickers, and that we didn't need to take down the signs. But subsequently, that has proven to not be the case. That was the basis of my vote, to not change the signage. And I would really like us to come back to that issue, to try to create some solution for these parents, and in my mind, I would still prefer the narrow solution of having window stickers. I know that, or I believe that the police chief may have commented that that might not be workable, but I don't really understand why that wouldn't be workable, given that for residents on streets with permit parking, we have residents with stickers and without stickers, and it's workable in a parking setting. And as a temporary measure for a few months, this would be important. And it's just important to people. People feel like they're busy, they're trying to get their children someplace, they're trying to get their children home at the end of the day, and there's a sign that's standing in the way of their ability to do that. So it's a very small thing, and only affects a few people, and we could all say, well, you know, can you not find other ways around it? And it's hard to tell these people that, you know, that they should have to, they should have to find a way around it. Thank you.
I thought also that that had been resolved, and so it'd be interesting, interesting to hear some feedback on that, not necessarily now, but later.
Yeah, I think we all operate under that assumption. So we're going to get something back from the chief and see what we need to do to make it happen.
Yeah, I did talk to the chief again. I did give the wrong impression to the council on the last meeting before the break about kind of how the process would work. Police officers have judgment as to whether or not to give tickets, and that is maintained. However, they can give tickets, and they can give warnings. They can't treat some people differently than others. However, if there is a desire by the council to have an exception for people to turn on the, against the signs, that can be done with some kind of a placard or sticker, but the signs would need to be changed to identify that, and it would need a change to the resolution.
Okay. I think we can take care of that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
In that regard, Councilmember May, I just, I wonder if, you know, it just even hangers that you, that people could put, like you have for handicap things. Those might be quick, easier to, the city could even make those, and wouldn't even have to go out and buy stickers and all that other kind of, that kind of stuff, and they might even be more visible. But I do think that, I agree with your concerns. This is just not workable, working the way it needs to work right now. My main comment tonight was simply to mention that the state legislature convened for the first time for this calendar year last Wednesday, and that Wednesday evening, the Maryland Municipal League had its annual reception for state legislators to come in and meet with members of the MML. It was held at the Maryland House. And while I was there for a couple hours, that's all it lasts, it's, I understand that it's mostly basically just people talking. There's no program. It's just an opportunity for people to literally to rub elbows. It gets pretty crowded and pretty noisy with everybody gabbing together. But I had the chance to talk to several delegates from this area, from our own district, Hector Mazir and Tom Hucker, and from the delegation adjacent to us representing Hinesville, Senator Victor Ramirez, and Delegate Jolene Ivy, who is the heading the Prince George's delegation this year, all in regard to one particular thing, and that is the source, the need to find a source to support transportation and HUR money this year, because we are, as I mentioned in previous conversations here at this, on this dais, the city's Transportation Trust Fund is running just about on eve or empty, which places the Purple Line in dire jeopardy. So far, all I've gotten is positive responses. Our PG delegates are certainly well aware of the Purple Line, and it's certainly as important to them as it is to us. So I'm hopeful that these kind of conversations, plus whatever, all, what everyone else is also trying to do in this, will bring about funding for transportation. But at this point in time, we're sort of waiting to see what the governor's budget is going to show, which he will be supposedly providing to the legislature this week. So we'll be looking at that, waiting to see what that has to say. But it's an important issue, and pay attention. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind everyone that on January 17th at 7:15, the Public Works Department is hosting the first meeting regarding the Flower Avenue Green Street Project. It starts at 7:15. Please come out. There's parking right across the street from Wilkinson Hall. Thank you.
Councilmember May, you have something else?
Yeah, I do. I apologize for forgetting two things. One is that there's a meeting tomorrow night about the Jackson Avenue sidewalk proposal, and mostly concerns which side of the street the sidewalk might go on if a sidewalk were to be approved. This is the 7500 block of Jackson Avenue, just above Sligo Creek Parkway. The other issue I wanted to bring up was that I went to a PTA meeting about gun violence at Piney Branch, no, I'm sorry, it was Tacoma Elementary School. I'm trying to keep track of where my kids are at any given time. And I won't talk about the broader details of the meeting, which were important, but not necessarily to the council, but the one comment that I think was important was the principal spoke, and she expressed some, it sounded like maybe there wasn't as much coordination with the police department as, not on this issue, not on the immediate response after the shootings in Connecticut, but just in general. And so I would just encourage the chief potentially to reach out to all the schools in the city, and just essentially make sure that they have his email, for example, the principal has his email and phone number. Just some, a simple act like that may go a long way. Thank you.
And I just have a couple of things to cover. I was also going to just say a little something about the opening day in Annapolis. I spent a good bit of the day there, and one of the more interesting things that occurred was I ran into two former delegates who are now lobbyists in Annapolis, who were both exclaiming the virtues of Tacoma Park, because they each have grandchildren living here. So it was very interesting to be chased by former delegates who wanted their picture taken with the mayor of Tacoma Park to prove to their grandchildren that they knew the mayor of Tacoma Park. That was an unusual occurrence for me. And along the lines of talking to the delegates and senators about priorities, like making sure that we get our highway user revenues back, and that we get funding for the Purple Line, I'll be spending a good deal of time on Wednesday going west instead of east, and meeting with delegates and senators in the western part of the state, who tend to feel that they don't think that taxpayers' money should go toward transit, because a lot of people in the state don't use it. So talking to them about those issues, hoping to help change their minds. I and some other council members attended the celebration at Video American on Friday night. My estimation is there were between 75 and 100 people there, and it was a fairly joyous event for the closing of a local business, but I think everybody understood the market dynamics that forced that, and really expressed their appreciation to everybody involved in making that a going concern for 18 years, and I did present the resolution that the council passed last week. A reminder to my colleagues that the MML Montgomery Chapter meeting for this month is Thursday night at Gaithersburg City Hall, and reminder that Representative from the governor's office will be talking to us about the governor's budget, which will be released on Thursday, and that's the point where we should find out whether the governor put HUR funding in his budget. So that'll be helpful to have that back and forth. I know that the acting city manager is going to mention where we are on the county tree law issues that I brought up last week, so we'll get to that in a minute. Also wanted to remind folks that we've scheduled, this council has scheduled a meeting with the city manager search task force, and that's for January 23rd at 7:30. And finally, I wanted to note, with a great deal of sadness, the death of a city resident for a long period of time, who was well-known and well-loved by a lot of people in town, Norm Gleichman, who is the husband of former council member Marie Ritso. She was a council member during 2005. She was the, basically, the appointed council member when her predecessor, Council Member Mazir, moved out of the ward. And she was a wonderful colleague for the four months that she was on the council, and I know that she and her family are really saddened by the loss of her husband, Norm Gleichman, who was only 58. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
As a follow-up, one of the things that I experienced at this gathering last Wednesday down in Annapolis was a strange phenomenon of numerous people, people who were delegates, others who are working Annapolis for the legislature and all this, kept saying to me, they, I had my name tag on Fred Schultz Tacoma Park, saying, oh, Tacoma Park, that's my favorite city, or, and they kept stopping me and wanting to talk about Tacoma Park. And I was musing about this thing, and I thought, well, this is, this is kind of funny. And I thought, in fact, I had a long conversation with this woman who's just been recently elected to the Montgomery County Board of Education, who was going on and on and on and on about her love for Tacoma Park, even though she lives up in the upper part of the county. So I said, well, maybe what we can do for somebody like you is to print a T-shirt that says that you're an honorary citizen of the city of Tacoma Park. I said, well, and then it occurred to me, well, maybe we could do this and sell these T-shirts, and that way we wouldn't really need to rely on HUR, if we could sell enough T-shirts. I'm exaggerating to the point.
How much are you planning on charging for that?
Well, maybe about $5,000 a T-shirt, right? No, but I'm just, was thinking that in our liberal mode is that since we let, it's our policy to allow non-citizens to vote in our election, why should we stop there? Why don't we just let anybody in the United States, or at least Maryland, vote in our election? But to be a little bit more serious, I do think that this, something like this might be a fundraising opportunity for, and one of our nonprofit organizations who would like to do this and make it look fancy and authentic, and sell these kinds of things, sort of like the Pope selling indulgences, where people could have a T-shirt or a hat or something, a bumper sticker that, just for the fun, because I think people would do it just for the fun of it, and that would be a nice little way for people, some organization to raise, raise money. That was my little mini brainstorm. I apologize for taking everybody's time.
And we'll have the trivia question, how is the city of Tacoma Park like the Pope?
I, I'm not going to respond to that question.
The city manager's comments.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, to follow up on the tree legislation, the county has two bills concerning kind of tree canopy and work on trees in the right of ways. There's been a good amount of discussion between our city attorney's office and county staff. It looks like we'll be able to identify some ways to kind of carve out Tacoma Park, whether it's to identify that we've got our own tree ordinance, and therefore, somebody doesn't, some things don't need to be duplicative, which would be burdensome to contractors who have to get multiple permits for working in the trees. And also to be clear that we would be in charge of trees along state rights of way in Tacoma Park. Doesn't look like there needs to be any action by the city council, as long as you give us direction to go ahead and pursue those exceptions. There will be a T and E committee work session beginning on January 28th, so there's lots of time to work out if there's some wording issues, but it looks like something we can simply forward over as a city's position without action, if you so desire. Do you desire that? Anybody have a problem?
Everybody happy with that approach?
Okay.
Okay, yes.
I have two other items. One is... One is, I forgot to mention last week that when I was at the kind of christening, or whatever it was, of the K-9 express bus, I talked a bit to Ms. Beggins from the ride-on bus system. She noted that the small ride-on buses that Tacoma Park would like to have back on our streets are -- will be part of the first group purchased under their new contract. Those buses probably won't be in operation here until fall, but we will be in the very first group of small buses. And finally, besides the Martin Luther King activities, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that in the past about eight days, the rec department has done, which has been pretty exciting. They had a weekend to go, their fitness expo at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, and they got about 250 people showing up there. Lots of people have never been involved before, so it was very exciting. And then this past Saturday, they had open house for some of their classes here. About 50 or 60 people came, but of those 50 and 60 people, 25 did walk-in registrations for classes. So it was quite lively in that regard, and it was fun. They also had the kids doing the work on clearing out the, you know, the invasive species, et cetera. That evening for the kids, also during the day when they weren't, if they weren't doing Martin Luther King stuff, they were one of the 615 kids in the winter basketball activities. And then that evening, about 10 of them went skiing. So it was quite a Saturday. And then, just so you know, tonight, we've got about 18 kids over at the Wizards game. So lots of fun, lot of activity with the kids, and I've got a really tired rec staff right now. But just wanted to mention the kind of fun of the last week.
Will please pass along our thank you.
Yes.
We don't have any minutes to adopt this evening. Next item is legislative update. Do we have any legislative updates?
The -- I think the one thing I'll just mention is that the Young Activist Club has been talked about with a number of legislators by our lobbyists, and there is a meeting that's being scheduled where they can meet with a number of our lobbyists, our District 20 legislators and some other legislators, to start talking about polystyrene and other kinds of items that they would like the state to not support. So that's kind of an exciting thing, making that connection. And I'll report back as we hear when they have some meetings. I think that's the main thing.
Thanks. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the first item on our regular agenda, which is a public hearing on the redistricting map and the redistricting proposal. Did we want to say anything before we take testimony? I can say a few things, or did the --
I think people can just -- nobody signed up.
Okay, but were you going to say anything about it before we proceed? And did the city attorney want to say anything about it before we proceed?
No.
Okay. I'll just say a couple of things, just to kind of set the stage for the hearing. Every 10 years, we do have to do, see if redistricting is needed. There's language in the city code that says that each ward should be compact in form and composed of adjoining territory. The population of the wards shall be substantially equal. There are various other standards that we have to address, the principle of one person, one vote, that the wards be geographically contiguous, that their boundaries recognize natural boundaries within practical limits, and that gerrymandering to ensure the election or defeat of any incumbent candidate or potential candidate not be tolerated. Then we have to operate within a variance of no more than 10% difference between the largest ward and the smallest ward. And then there was discussion that the council had about the two multifamily buildings that were vacant at the time of the 2010 census, and we were concerned that that would have a temporary impact. So city staff came up with an option for determining in a fair and uniform way how to conduct a citywide evaluation of temporarily vacant residential structures, and we included a method for taking that into account when we did the redistricting. The council then talked about wanting to keep neighborhoods together and not dividing wards up the middle of the street, but trying to go split blocks where that seemed to make sense. So that got us to the point where we now have a proposed redistricting plan and map, and that has been publicized, and we have solicited comment from the public. And it's now time for people who would like to testify. If you come to the podium and identify yourself, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes, and we will hear from everybody who wants to talk about the redistricting plan.
Good evening. My name is Hester Tullott. I live in Ward 5, and I come here tonight wearing two hats, but I'm only speaking for myself at this point and not for any of the other members of the redistricting committee. My first hat is as resident of Ward 5. As a citizen of Ward 5, I have to say that I'm opposed to the proposed map. My first concern is the lack of transparency in the criteria used to develop this option and to reject the four options presented by the redistricting committee. This option decreases the diversity of Ward 5. We are already the poorest, or one of the poorest wards in the city, and by removing houses out of our ward and adding a large apartment building, you, the council, are compounding economic disparities between the wards of our city and further increasing the poverty in ours. You are also decreasing even further the ratio of homeowners to renters in a ward that is already distorted. I'm also concerned that the current map redistricts out of Ward 5 a potential candidate for the city council, namely Eric Council. Back over a year ago now, I was very pleased and honored when I was invited to join the redistricting committee. I greatly enjoyed working with the other members of the committee on the four proposals we gave to the council. I was saddened that the council did not feel any of the four proposals we came up with deserved to go up for public comment. We gave you, the city council, two proposals that you rejected outright. We went back to the drawing board and gave you two more proposals that fulfilled your need to keep council members in their districts, community organizations together as much as possible, as well as taking into account the empty apartment buildings in Ward 4 and Ward 6. We on the committee were not informed as to why our last two proposals were rejected, nor were we informed before the public about this public hearing on your proposal. We had distinct guidance as to how to come up with our options, which we followed scrupulously. I am saddened that you have allowed personal reasons to supersede the democratic process. I, like the other members of our committee, have a demanding job and two little kids that I leave at home, and I would love to spend more time with. Yet when we were asked to take part in the redistricting committee, we thought it our civic duty to agree and participate. It is worrisome that those of us who gave our time and effort and good faith to this process were ignored by the city council, and it certainly gives us pause when asked to participate in city government committees in the future. In our progressive city of Tacoma Park, it would be admirable if we lead with example and let redistricting be a non-political process done by independent group of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other people who would like to comment?
I'm Ann Hollander, Ward 5 resident.
Ann, can you do us a favor? That microphone is swung sideways. Can you swing it around?
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. It's -- okay.
Are we good?
Want to make sure we're supposed to do that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ann Hollander, Tacoma Park, Ward 5 resident. I've followed with some interest this redistricting process. I know it's very complex and a difficult thing to kind of hash all the numbers and come up with contiguous borders and, you know, all the different considerations that you have. The one thing that really does concern me is that if you have a committee of laypeople in the community taking a very objective approach to this redistricting question, they followed the parameters that you laid out in their first two proposals, and then when you tightened the criteria for establishing the contiguous borders, came up with an additional two proposals, and apparently those were rejected, it really does give me pause. What is the reason that this objective determination of the lay professionals that you had appointed were rejected? And I'd just really like some explanation to the public of why that happened beyond political considerations, which inevitably are part of your determination. But I really do think that because those of us who sit on committees in the city spend a lot of our time and effort doing the very best we can to give you the, you know, most unjaded advice that we can, that if those proposals are rejected, we at least deserve to know why. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Lanza, 7215 Cedar Avenue, Ward 1. Some of the previous two comments sound a little familiar to me. I've served on the redistricting committee in 2000 for the previous redistricting, and we had some issues with constraints being changed during the process or even after the process, as I recall. I would suggest that, in the interest of transparency, that all of the information from these various proposals that have been floated around be submitted and presented to the public, so that they can look at them and see the process as it has developed, rather than just putting into the public hearing the options that are currently being debated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name again is Patty Lovelace, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'm in Ward 4. I know a lot of people feel that certain ways on their city council's being moved, and that's one of my real worries. I mean, that's really -- I voted for Terry Siemens, and my vote counts, and I don't want to be separated from his ward. I want to keep my same councilman, because without him, I probably wouldn't even be around anymore. He's done a lot to save me, you know, including visiting in the hospitals and stuff and doing what he could to help me out. He's doing much more than the call of duty, and I don't want to lose him. We've got a lot of other seniors in our building who feel the same way. It's a senior citizens and handicapped, disabled building, and we need what we got. We don't want to lose anything. I want to keep my friend, my friend and councilman, Terry Siemens, on my ward. I don't want to lose him. I'm sure there's a way around it, you know, without separating our wards. I don't want to have him land in another ward, or me land in another ward, because that is really tragic. And if it does separate, can one person ask to have their apartment remain in Ward 4 either? Because I don't want to -- I don't want to lose my councilman. I really worry about that, because he's done a lot to help me out. Him and his wife, like I said, is two for the price of one. And the voters voted, who they voted for, for a reason. We don't want to have our vote just thrown away, because what he's doing for me is unbelievable. No one else could do it. No one else has done it. And I want to thank Terry Siemens very much and his wife, Joyce, for doing everything they can. And please, I want to keep him in Ward 4. They mean that much to me. I worried about it. I've been up a couple of nights around the redistricting when it first came up, because I couldn't sleep, because I was afraid of losing him. And I want to ask the people in Ward 4 to stand up and do speak about the same thing. We've got to keep our ward intact, because a lot of our seniors don't want to see a change like that. We want to keep who we got. It's that important to me. And also, the rest of the people that I know of, they just were shocked when I mentioned to us a couple of months ago, we could lose our councilman. You know, we've got to keep up on this issue and do everything we can to keep our councilman intact, to keep our situation intact without getting worse. Thank you for letting me share, and remember, I want to keep my councilman, Terry Siemens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there other testimony? Anybody else like to testify at the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will call a close to the public hearing to the city clerk. Did we get any written testimony submitted?
No, there was no -- I -- there was some correspondence with the redistricting task force, but no public comments were submitted, per se, to me at all.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments at the public hearing. We have noted those, and we're scheduled to take up the redistricting proposal.
28th.
28th? Okay, that is two weeks. We will take it up, and it's scheduled for two reading. So there will be two more opportunities to comment and for council to keep it the way it is or change it if we decide that we want to do that. I just want to address one or two things that were brought up this evening, since those people are here. I do want to remind folks that one of the criteria that the council discussed as things progressed on this was our desire to have neighborhood associations and neighborhoods kept together and to, where possible, not run the lines down the middle of the streets, but down the back of the property lines. I think we had some discussions as this came up a couple of times about which, how we considered what the committee had presented and how we agreed with that or had some difficulties with that if that wasn't communicated to the committee. I apologize for that, but we did have a number of public discussions. And just finally, to the question about publishing all options, all of those options are available on the public record there on the website as part of the various agenda items when we discuss them. And I think the feeling is that when you go through all of the iterations of a particular proposal and get to the final one, it can be very confusing if you put all of those up there at the same point. It's much easier for people to look at the final iteration of what was being considered, and if they so desire to see some of the earlier iterations, those are available. So we will be taking that up again in two weeks. We now have our regular meeting, and the first item is the consent agenda. Since we removed item B from the consent agenda, we're left with item A, which is the single reading ordinance awarding small community grants, and item C, which is the resolution appointing a representative to the Montgomery County Cable Communications Advisory Committee.
Would you like to move it?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. It's a -- there's a single reading ordinance in there, so we'll need a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Hi.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Maile.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now take up item B, which is the resolution providing for appointments to the committee on the environment. And we have in front of us a revised resolution from the one that was in the agenda packet, and this one notes the 15 names that we are appointing to the committee. Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Someone.
All right, here's a second. Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Maile, and council discussion. Okay, the names who we're appointing to the committee on the environment are Shannon Baker Branstadter, Wendy Bell, Rocco Crasagrande, Paul Kostavsky, Cindy Dibala, Stuart Gillespie, Satjivon Iklekalsa, Melanie Isis, Lauren Marshall, Sarah Mazur, John Peterson, Allison Piazza, Lindsay Rabnett, Dan Seligman, and Ed Sargent. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I note that we are not appointing one applicant, Dominic Rose, who is not a city resident. I note that we are not appointing one applicant, Dominic Bros, who is not a city resident, who is very well qualified for the committee, and he had corresponded with me prior to applying, and we, he wasn't sure about his residence, and I told him that he wasn't in the city. So I'm very glad that he was, put himself forward to serve in any case. We, the council in reconstituting the Environment Committee did set a limit of 15 members, and we are at 15. So of course, I like the rest of the council, or appreciative of the people who did step forward and are being appointed, and of Mr. Bros's application as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. In email correspondence, we had discussed inviting Mr. Bros to participate as an advisor to the committee if he was interested in. I didn't hear any objection to that, and I wonder if that's still a possibility without appointing him, but just essentially extending the offer for him to be, to attend the meetings.
I think we can.
Well, I'd like to respond to that.
Councilmember Grimes.
I, I, I'm uncomfortable with that. I recognize that I might be the only, probably am the only council member who is. The Committee on the Environment themselves, according to city code, are advisors to the council. It's a little strange to me to have an advisor to an advisor noting also that any member of the public is welcome to participate in the open committee meetings, and so it makes me wonder what an advisor is, because in effect, any resident of Tacoma Park or any person who wishes to say something to the committee or participate in their meetings is already welcome to. So I'm not comfortable with, I'm, I'm, we certainly should thank Mr. Bros directly, as opposed to on the podium here, for applying and inform him that he is welcome to participate in committee meetings, so long as they are open meetings, and I would leave it at that. But that's, that's my, my thought. I recognize that others might feel differently.
Councilmember Schultz.
I would just note that with regard to Mr. Bros, the criteria that we set originally for this committee did not draw a distinction between residents and non-residents. Actually, we do have some committees that allow for non-residents, and we have other committees that prohibit non-residents. So we did make that, that choice. So it, there may be other, I just, I'm not trying to make a point, I'm just trying to point out a factual, a fact or an information for the benefit of listeners and observers here. I do have a question that some, some people are being appointed for, they're differing term expirations, as there needs to be, according to the arrangement for staggered terms, and how were those terms decided? Were they sort of pulling names out of a hat?
Sure. What, what I did, and I feel like I said this on the cover sheet, but I may not have, I simply took them alphabetically and went, alternated between, you know, two years and one year, essentially. I mean, essentially, it's two and a half years and one and a half years for this first time, but, but that's how I did it. I didn't try to puzzle out who deserved two-year appointments and who deserved one-year appointments.
Thank you for not trying to do that. I think your method is, well, it answers my question, let's say that. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that my preference on committees is that we get members from, who are residents of Tacoma Park, so I certainly support this list as it is here today. And I would agree that we should be, to reach out to one gentleman and remind him that he is appreciated and that he's welcome to attend any and all meetings, and we look forward to hearing his opinions also. But I would agree with Councilmember Grimes that we don't need to designate a special class, because all residents of Tacoma Park or neighboring communities are welcome to our meetings. Thank you.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
I wasn't proposing that we change the text of this document, but rather, just that we have the clerk reach out to him and say, you have expertise, and the committee would be welcome to have you, you know, be there, which is not anything more than any other member of the public would get, except that this is someone who went through the trouble of submitting an application.
I would support that.
I agree, I agree not creating a special class of advisors to advisors, but just the sort of courtesy to keep him in the meetings.
And of course, he's welcome to apply again when the next, when there's a vacancy, which there undoubtedly will be.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, my only comment is, I was pretty excited that, that there were 15 registrants or participants or people, or actually, a few more than that, one person with Drew's name, plus the other individual's non-resident. I think, based on sometimes us having a lot of openings in committees, this was pretty exciting, and it's, you know, I think I said in an email today, it's revisiting a, a committee that, that is definitely upfront in, in all of our discussions throughout the city. So it's pretty, pretty thrilling and exciting to see this many people be, being interested in, in a Committee on the Environment. Thank you.
And I'll just add that we've also noted in our discussions that we, current, in this current group that we're appointing with this resolution, that we don't have any residents from wards four and five, and I know that the councilmembers from those wards are continuing to look for people who are interested in participating in the Committee on the Environment, and the council recognizes that as those people are identified, we want to be sure that we can take the opportunity, when it's presented, to appoint people, to make sure that we have people from all wards. And it's also good that we have some representation from some people who represent some businesses, and having the broad range of people is going to be helpful, so that we not only have people who have some professional expertise in environmental issues, but we also have some people who can work with various communities in figuring out some of the things that we need to coordinate on these issues. Any other comments? Any public comments on this resolution appointing members to the Committee on the Environment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, that passes unanimously. We have a work session discussion scheduled as our final agenda item this evening, so Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 6, Point 16, Landlord-Tenant Relations. This is the first of a number of discussions that we'll have on this chapter of the code. Welcome to the, as a community development director and a city attorney, and you're going to walk us through this. Or you're going to hear our comments.
I can do either, depending upon what the council's preference is. I would hate to go point by point, because so much of it is just housekeeping, but I can do that if you'd like.
No, no, we don't need house, we don't need point by point, but a, kind of a, kind of a nice little high-point dance through would be good.
Okay, cool. We can do that. Basically, the last time this, the city's Chapter 6 Housing Code was reviewed was roughly 10 years ago, back in 2003. And there have been some minor tweaks here and there as issues arose. One that you may recall is the 48-hour written notice of entry. I believe that was about a year and a half ago, that was adopted by the council in response to some issues that arose during the COLTA process. But generally, it's been sort of left alone for the last 10 years. During the intervening year, staff has identified things that could be better worded, identified sections where there should be more consistency between the language and the way things are phrased, but have also identified trends that have taken place over that 10-year period that are not specifically addressed in the ordinance. And in the interest of easing the process for both landlords and tenants, but also at the COLTA level, have proposed a number of changes. What I've tried to do is group them in your cover memos, so that you can kind of get a feel for what we were looking at. One of the questions that was raised by the council member prior to the meeting tonight was what the impact of some of these recent changes, or recent issues were, and frequently, it's increased cost to either the tenant or the landlord, particularly as far as the, what we like to call creative fees, in an effort to increase the rent without actually increasing the rent. Transfer of financial responsibility to the tenant for utility costs in sort of a, an inconsistent manner. And then the renewal of the initial leases, and we can talk about that in a little more detail once we get to that part of the code. So with that being said, you'll note throughout the code that there are changes in terms of references to other sections within this particular portion of Chapter 6, as well as to other sections of the city code. So in the interests of keeping consistency, code references have been specifically identified by section number and name, and references to administrative regulations vary from department regulations to city administrative regulations. So we've tried to clean up language like that, so that it's consistent throughout the ordinance. If you turn to pages three and four, we've tried to clarify tenants' obligations, particularly as far as keys, requiring the tenant to get permission in writing from the landlord prior to changing all the locks on a rental facility or the particular unit, and then also stipulating they actually give copies of the keys to the landlord in a reasonable time period. I think we've identified 14 days, if I recall correctly. Excuse me, within a week, seven calendar days. We've also expanded or clarified as an obligation in the tenant that they have to provide access to the unit for any legitimate cause or request, and that ties back to the 48-hour notice of entry for not only inspections, which is what the code currently says, but for repairs and other types of situations like that. And then have added a section that requires them to prepare the rental, excuse me?
You're saying have added a section?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Identify?
Yeah. On page three, thank you, I tend to do that. On page three, item H, or number H, we've expanded it to clarify the key replacement obligations of the tenant. In I, we've expanded it to include lawful entry into the unit regardless of, or for a variety of reasons and not just inspections. And then in the next item, number J, or letter J, to prepare the rental unit in accordance with instructions for extermination, which is the key right now, particularly as far as bedbugs and other infestation. And then if you go to the next page on four, we have, I'll just show you that B and E, for example, you can see the changes that we made to increase consistency regarding other code references. We've also consolidated G, H, and I into a single section that deals with the landlord's obligations regarding keys and key maintenance. If you turn to page five, the largest change here is in I, where we're providing additional language, requiring the landlord to provide documentation of the cost of all repairs that are made to a unit, and then to document the actual damage, and that the repair was actually completed, prior to assessing any cost to the tenant. Oftentimes, you'll have tenants that vacate a unit, and they're billed for repairs, but there's really, if they question whether or not the repair was done, or the quality of the repair, which will have an impact on the cost that's assessed to them, this should address that issue.
You skipped over K and L, which you have struck.
K and L are examples of language that's been consolidated in another section, so that it's all in one area, rather than scattered throughout the ordinance.
Thank you.
If you go to page six, here in H, we have clarified that they need to, that the lease needs to include language prohibiting the transfer of utility bills to the tenant without going through a process that's referenced later in the ordinance. And then, broken out in J and K, the different rent increase requirements that apply to different types of rental units. And this deals with the rent stabilization ordinance. Single-family homes, for example, are often described as not being subject to rent stabilization, when in reality, they are, but it's a very limited requirement that apply to them, i.e. the rent can't increase more than once in any 12-month period, and that the landlord has to give sufficient notice of the rent increase. So we've broken it out here, recognizing those two different classifications of rental properties, and clearly identified which sections of the rent stabilization ordinance applies to those types of units, insofar as rent increases for that tenant. And then that continues on page seven. Okay, if you want to turn to page eight, the most significant change here is in B, lease renewals. And this language has been added to clarify who's responsible, or the landlord's responsibilities in terms of notifying the tenant, or giving the tenant opportunity to renew the lease for one year. It reorders and groups language that had addressed under what circumstances the landlord did not have to renew a lease for 12-month period, and that varies from when the tenant's given notice, when the landlord is given notice for cause, i.e. the tenant hasn't been paying rent, or has done damage to the property. If you go to page nine, item number B, this is language that has been added where the tenant has a responsibility of noting or advising their landlord that they consider their lease to be renewed for one year, if the landlord fails to provide these other requirement, or if the landlord fails to notify them that the lease is being renewed for less than one year, or is not being renewed at all. This language has been added because we have found that on occasion, and not always, tenants will flip between whether or not they have a one-year lease or a month-to-month lease, depending upon what the circumstances are. So this would require a tenant to proactively identify whether or not they want to be in a month-to-month lease, or a one-year lease, after their initial lease has been, has expired. If you turn to page 10, one of the things I referenced in my opening remarks was the use of, creative use of fees to, for, by some landlords. What we've done is, rather than having individual sections sort of scattered throughout the ordinance that deal with specific fees, we've consolidated them into a single section and identified a number of requirements that would apply to all fees, regardless of how they they, what they're for. So if you were to look at the code right now, one section on a fee may say that it cannot be applied if, or a fee cannot be assessed if it was not assessed to the prior tenant. Well, the reality is that applies across the board at all fees, and it's not specifically broken out into the individual fees in the current language. So we have grouped all of those general requirements for the assessment of fees in a single section on page 10. And it addresses the fact that there are actually optional services that a tenant can opt out of, i.e. internet, garage parking, off-street parking, storage, et cetera. And that the tenant has a right to refuse that and that prior to, what the landlord needs to do prior to assessing those optional fees. Other items that are included within this section are fairly straightforward in that the fees have to be uniformly assessed, they have to be disclosed at the beginning of tenancy or with sufficient notice to the tenant. The fees cannot be charged for services that were previously provided to the past tenant and no cost, and that they can't be charged for capital improvements or additional operating expenses.
It seems to read, though, that they could impose a new fee in the middle of a lease?
For an optional service.
Okay, if the, right. So the tenant would have the right to say nothing?
If you go to page 11, you'll see one of the new fees that we've added to the text, and that's for a short-term lease fee. The current ordinance does not address short-term lease fees at all, and it's one thing that we've noted as being assessed to tenants that may have not been an issue when the COLTA was last reviewed. Basically, this sets out the requirements that a short-term lease fee can only be assessed if the tenant has requested less than 12-month period or lease at the beginning of their initial tenancy, and that it cannot be assessed for more than 12 months. We have found that on occasion landlord will charge an additional fee for a short-term lease in the tenant's in their third year of the lease. That is not a short-term lease. And that a short-term lease fee cannot be assessed if the landlord is the one that has offered a less than 12-month lease at the beginning of their tenancy.
And what's the maximum amount for the fee?
Staff is in the process right now of doing some research on that. The fees themselves will be incorporated into administrative regulations. Another new fee that we've addressed is on page 12, extermination fees.
You skipped over one, though, the utility fees?
This has just been pulled out as utility fees rather than grouped under other fees. So we've tried to break it out so it's easier to track. So we have late fees, short-term lease fees, pet fees, utility fees. There have been no changes to that particular section other than that it's now a subheading.
So you allow the landlords to bill tenants for utilities even if they're not individually
That's later, but we wouldn't, would not. Okay.
Okay, I'm confused. What is this utility fee?
If the landlord has already transferred responsibility for utilities to a tenant without having done the submetering, because that's been allowed in the code before, then this is how they have to assess those fees. But any landlord in the future who wants to transfer responsibility for utility payments would have to have them submetered and go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
And this section also includes the air conditioning rental fees and the utilities associated with that.
Just while you're on that section, can you remind me of the, I remember a discussion the council had, I don't remember how many years ago, but it revolved around what was required for electrical circuits, and it was particularly paying attention to where tenants plug in air conditioners and things like that and how that all worked. What was the end result of what that added to the code?
For those of you who were not involved in that conversation, when the city transferred over our contract with Montgomery County for inspection services, one of the things that became increasingly apparent was that there were a lot of individual window air conditioning units plugged into outlets that weren't grounded. And we're also dealing with the refrigerator and posters and all that stuff. So the county began to enforce the code as it applies to services for AC units. And the big concern at the council level as well as at staff level was that, okay, so now the landlord has to make all these additional improvements to their electrical systems. A lot of them had to install heavy-ups, which can be $5,000 or more, that they would then turn around and prohibit the installation or use of individual window air conditioning units, which around here is not necessarily a good thing. So the council required that landlords, if they had allowed past tenants to have air conditioning, individual window air conditioning units in their apartment, that they had to continue to allow that and that they had to address the property maintenance code requirements that were identified by the county for electrical service to that unit.
So the idea was to make sure that if we were sanctioning continuing window air conditioning, that the electrical.
That they were safe.
Systems were safe to do that.
Right. And that's from the code perspective, but then from the tenant perspective, that you didn't want to prohibit or have run the risk of having an amenity, if you want to describe AC as an amenity, available to them in the past, removed for the future. So if you had AC before, you can still have AC. Landlord was responsible for doing all the upgrades. And that's, that language is still included in the lease obligations and addressed in the fee schedule as far as rental fees for individual AC units, installation of those, and additional utility costs that are incurred by the landlord during the typical summer months if the landlord, in fact, pays utilities for that particular unit.
Okay, thanks for that.
Did that make sense?
Reminder and clarification. I just want to make sure that I remembered it correctly, and I knew that many people on the council hadn't been privy to that discussion.
It's quite a controversial month and a half while we were working that one out. Also on page 12, we are proposing deleting the, in the security deposit section, we're proposing just cross-referencing the state law rather than including all of the text in the city's code. If you'll note, the next, I think it's eight pages, it's all, the language is all deleted from the state code. This was one of the things that the COLTA, several members of COLTA did not agree with us as far as a recommendation. They felt that it should be included in here because then it would be easier for tenants to find the language for the code. It's our position, or my position specifically, that providing that language or that law to tenants is easily done, because typically when there is a security deposit issue, they come and they talk to us, and we can give them our code as well as the state code without having to worry about whether or not the text that is included in our ordinance is the most current, or that people are reading it and using definitions that have been included in the state law and taking them and interpreting them and applying to our code, which may or may not be the same definition or the same requirements. And the city attorney has agreed with me that that's an appropriate approach.
Do we have a reference in here to the section of state code so that if somebody was looking in here, they would know where to look?
Yes, sections 8-203 and 8-203.1.
Thanks, I didn't see it.
So basically, from an administrative standpoint, landlords and tenants alike will get a copy of the state law as it applies to security deposits. With landlords, it's easily done. We would give it to them every time when they go through the landlord certification program, and it's included in their landlord-tenant bible, notebook binder thing. And then also would be given to tenants who had approached us with questions regarding their security deposit. It could be distributed when we have our tenant rights meetings and can be folded into the landlord-tenant handbook that we are going to be reprinting this year. If you, okay, so that deletes the text from page 12 up through the bottom of page 20, where it talks about the transfer of utility payments to tenants. And here, the biggest change is where it specifically prohibits the transfer of utilities to tenants if the unit is not, or the utility is not individually metered or submetered. This would not prohibit landlords who are currently divvying up their utility bills among the tenants from continuing to do that. But if someone who had historically paid the electric bill all of a sudden wanted to split it up between their three tenants, the only way they would be able to do that now is if it was, the units were individually metered or submetered for that utility. Not included in this draft is language that will clarify that regarding the fact that if you're currently doing it, splitting up the utility bill three ways, you can continue to do that, but you can't all of a sudden transfer utility bills over to a tenant when you haven't done in the past, unless it was metered.
So it would have language that basically said, if you were doing this before such and such a date, which would be the implementation of these revisions?
Right. Think of it as a grandfather clause. The other thing that's new in this section is on page 21, is the city distribution of, or city review of the proposed transfer of utility costs. And then on page 22, we've just expanded the entry notification require, or requirements to include the use of email. And then the balance of the code, those changes are fairly straightforward. There are some proposed changes to retaliatory practices on page 25 that I'd like Ken to walk through with you. You do not have any specific text at this point, but we would send that to you.
We are considering the possibility of either, let me start with a little background. It's been the experience of COLTA and, sorry, it's been the experience of COLTA and staff that landlord retaliation seems to be on the rise. Tenants feel that when they ask for repairs or stand up for rights, that they will find their, themselves on their way out the door. And we've had experience in court where the, one of the judges in Montgomery County Circuit Court has taken a very, or given a very restrictive reading to what the retaliation code allows as far as looking at the motive of the landlord. And once a tenant makes a, an initial case that they have, you know, they did something that's protected, they filed a COLTA complaint or a housing code enforcement complaint, and then the landlord took some adverse action against, have usually noticed to vacate shortly The court essentially says you can't ask the landlord why he's issuing the notice to vacate. You need to, the tenant has to prove that it's issued in retaliation, and landlords don't say, I want you out of here because you filed a complaint. They, they stand behind the right to give a tenant a no-fault notice to vacate, and they say that's, that's what I'm doing. So since we initially enacted the code by incorporating the text of the state retaliation statute, the state has actually amended its code. So we have old retaliation language from the state code in our code, which we're not bound by it because we say it's incorporated as amended, but certainly it does cause some confusion between landlords and tenants to have our code say something that's not, is no longer the law. We have a few possibilities. One, the new state code is better than the old state code. It does provide a little bit more protection to tenants. One problem with the old language was a tenant had to show that an act by the landlord was motivated solely by the tenant's protected activity. Under the new law, now the tenant just has to show that that was a contributing factor. Because often, you know, landlords will have seemingly legitimate reasons to evict a tenant, but probably would not have evicted the tenant just for those reasons, but the retaliation is an influence. That makes it a little bit easier for tenants to prove their case. One, one option we have is to both incorporate the state code and the Montgomery County code. Each law provides slightly different protections to tenants. And what we can do is say that we are incorporating both provisions and we will, you know, provide the tenants the maximum possible rights under those laws. And the, the third possibility is to enact our own law and essentially tailor the Tacoma Park Landlord-Tenant Retaliation Code to, to promote, or to best protect tenants, if that's the, if the, if that's the council's inclination. And just historically, we've understood the council to, to be interested in promoting tenants' rights more than either the county or the state legislature. But we, you know, we would like, before drafting something, we would like guidance from the council as to, as to, you know, how far we want to go with the retaliation.
You have a recommendation?
I don't have a strong recommendation. I mean, I think it's a, it's a balancing of the, of the costs and benefits and risks to the different approaches. I mean, I do know that, that we could, we could craft a statute that I think would give tenants much better protection. They would tend to fare better before COLTA. They'd be more likely to, to prove their case and, and stay in their, in their units.
But if you crafted, if crafted the city's retaliation code, how would it hold up in
I mean, we, we have done some research into how similar laws have been applied in the past. And the, the issue we have with the state retaliation code is that. And the issue we have with the state retaliation code is it expressly authorizes counties to enact landlord tenant retaliation provisions. It's silent as to municipal corporations. The Attorney General interpreting similar language in the past has said that the express recognition of counties over municipalities is not significant. What that conveys is that the state legislature recognized that there's room for varying laws on this topic, and we don't intend to occupy this field of regulation. So if a county can do it, a municipal corporation can do it.
What's the downside of just incorporating the county's code?
It, the, there's, if we're talking about incorporating both the state and the county, then I think it would be a little bit confusing for landlords to understand their obligations, for tenants to understand their rights, and for COLTA to apply two laws in one hearing. I did talk to somebody at the Montgomery County Landlord Tenant Commission, and they've been applying the county and the state law, so it is feasible. But the, I think what the, there's a few things that we could add to help protect tenants, and there's a few things that we could remove. I think one thing we'd want to do, and the District of Columbia has done this, is created a rebuttable presumption that an eviction that occurs within six months of some kind of protected activity by the tenant would be, is retaliatory. And then, so if the tenant do anything but show that what happened to them and what they did that was protected, they'd win their case unless the landlord came in and showed why they decided to evict the tenant or take some action against them. I think that would be helpful for tenants. Another thing, for example, under the state code, it says that after six months, the Maryland code says after six months, it's presumed not to be retaliation after six months, where it is not retaliation as a matter of law. So a landlord could wait six months, evict the tenant, and they're home free. So I would like to, or benefits would benefit by eliminating that provision. And then the last piece, I mean, I would like to put something in the code that says once a tenant has made their case, putting aside the six months, or the six-month loan, once a tenant has made an initial case that there's retaliation, that the landlord, or the burden of proof shifts to the landlord to show a legitimate reason for the termination. Essentially, we have cases where the landlord says, you know, we're here, all this evidence from the tenant about what a good tenant they were, and they were paying the rent for seven years, and the tenant in the downstairs basement was always getting arrested, and he's still there, and I'm evicted, and all I did was ask to get my apartment painted. And the landlord, you know, the tenant hears all this evidence, says the landlord, well, why did you do it? And the landlord says, I just, no reason, I don't need a reason. And I mean, landlords don't evict good tenants for no reason, and I think we want to give COLTA the opportunity to hear both sides of the story.
Councilmember Schultz.
What is the difference between evicting a tenant from the law's point of view and a landlord choosing not to renew a lease, which therefore means that the lease is terminated and the person has to move?
The, I mean landlords have a right under the Maryland code to terminate the lease at the end of the tenancy. So none of the existing retaliation statutes and our, any statute that we draft could not prohibit a landlord from terminating a lease at the end of the term.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Grubbs?
Well, not about retaliation. I'm going to suggest later some wording changes here and there. I do have one that I'll bring up now, which is regarding written notice. It's mentioned, written notice, a number of times in here, but the only time, the only place that I see written notice spelled out as to what that means is, I lost it. Oh, it's at the top of page 21. So if written notice is not separately defined somewhere here, I would suggest that you pull it out and define it upfront as applying to all the sections in here. That's just a comment. So I have two questions. I might have missed this here. Is there some provision in here for requiring landlords to provide city-supplied tenant information packet that would include an outline of the tenant's rights as part of signing a lease? And is that desirable?
What we do have is the lease requirements. There's kind of a laundry list of things that we require the landlord to include in their lease, and the intent is to give the tenants the notice of the many rights that the city has.
So you think that's sufficient so far, what you have already?
I mean, I think we've tried to, I mean, we're trying to balance getting the tenants the information that's helpful to them against having a lease that's 200 pages long. So there may be, it may, it's worth considering some kind of supplement so that they have their lease and another package of information.
You know, what I kind of picture is something very brief and to the point, essentially an information card that is kind of bullet and so on. But that might not be, that might be an answer chasing some problem that doesn't exist.
There's nothing brief and to the point about landlord tenant laws.
Okay.
Here. One of the things that we do with landlords is during the landlord certification seminar, we give them a copy of the landlord tenant handbook, which is both in English and Spanish, and encourage them to give that to their tenants and make additional copies available. So the information is out there frequently, it's just a matter of asking for it.
Okay. I have one more question. This is totally speculative, but it seems like an opportune time to ask. Could the city require in here landlords to provide city-supplied voter registration information to tenants when they sign a new lease? You don't have to answer right now.
Okay. I'm not aware of any reason I couldn't, perhaps never looked into that issue.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. One comment on page four around the requirements for painting. I wonder, and I'm just sensitive to this because of the case going on in Board Two right now, I wonder if there wouldn't be some value in mentioning lead laws or something, whether it's referring to state or federal requirements in terms of painting?
I believe that that's addressed in the Property Maintenance Code section of the ordinance. I'll double-check that and make sure that we've got it in there at some point in time because a lot of the environmental or lead laws are referenced in that code. It's not specifically part of the landlord tenant ordinance, but the state and federal law requires that landlords give their tenants, at least initially upon when they first move in, a copy of, you know, your lead laws, kinds of things as far as compliance with lead-based paint and things like that. But I'll double-check the Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you.
While we turn to page four, I have a question. I was thinking about this whole section about keys and locks. And I was just wondering whether for rental units, whether anybody is moving toward the number pad combination locks as opposed to keys, whether that's precluded, whether it's encouraged, whether it's not practicable. I just know that a number of people I know have been moving in that direction for single-family houses, and it seems like it solves a lot of the issues for rekeying and who gets in when, because it's more easily controlled.
I have not heard of-
And it seems not to be addressed in here.
Right.
Right. It could be addressed in the definitions section.
Rekey could be construed as being an electronic code.
Yeah.
I mean-
Yeah. It would deal with it in the definitions section.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any, I'm not aware of any security reason why that recoding wouldn't be just as good as rekeying. And it probably would be more practical, so I think it makes sense to acknowledge that, so that-
Yeah, just, I know that once a customer of mine put them in, once I put them in for a customer, we put them in, and everybody I've talked to has wanted them, and everybody I've put them in for has loved them. And so it seems to be the way people are moving. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. What do you guys think is the adoption rate of landlords using the city's model lease? Are, are there a lot of landlords still out there creating their own leases? And is there any way that we could, I don't know, give it away for free, give them the link? Is there anything we can do so that for, on COLTA's side, it's much easier to administer what the laws are for the city and better protection for the tenants?
Correct. The city's standard lease is currently available in English and Spanish on the city's website. Copies are given to all the landlords when we go through the certification program, and we have a pile of them that we hand out when anybody asks us to. Requiring them to use the standard lease was a hotly debated item when we were going through and talking about the recodification or the review of this ordinance. And it was felt that, given the uniqueness of some of the properties and the landlords, that it may not be appropriate, one size fits all may not necessarily be appropriate in Tacoma Park, though we do continue to encourage people to use it. Landlord tenant staff has also offered to review people's leases to make sure that they're in compliance with the city's code, and frankly, have had very few takers, but are preparing to do a little more promotion of that service that would make life a lot easier for both the landlords, the tenants, and COLTA-
Right.
-if it were to get to that point.
Would it work if we required the lease but allowed landlords to provide addendums?
We kind of do that now, don't we?
But we don't require the lease?
No.
I mean, we require all these provisions, and if I were a landlord, I would use the model lease and add paragraphs.
Ken, I'm sorry. Ken, can you use the mic?
I'm sorry. Saying, we do, we have extensive requirements about what has to be in the lease. And if I were a landlord, I was saying I would use our lease and add my unique provisions. And that would ensure that I was in compliance with the code and address the issues I had to address. But we haven't required it so far. One thing we discussed was moving to this requirement and having tenants in all different states of, you know, initial lease terms, or having been month-to-month tenants for the last 10 years, we're concerned about all of a sudden requiring everybody to have a new lease. It sounds like that could create as many problems as it solves.
Could we say something like leases going forward, pick a date, are supposed to be the city's leases, the city's model lease? Would that work? I just want you to consider it.
Right.
Because it's been an ongoing problem with these unique leases.
Is there lucky enough to have a lease?
And I have one more question. Electronic notification. Is there any way we could consider email for other forms of notification other than just the 48-hour notice?
I can talk to staff about that again. They were frankly hesitant to even include it in the 48-hour notice, notification section, concerned being that, is it sufficient notice if they use the wrong email address, or people don't check their email on a regular basis, that type of thing? But we can go back and revisit it. From my perspective, I think it makes sense to include it as an option in all of them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Why wouldn't you do that and start the 48 hours upon the tenant's acknowledgement of the landlord's email?
That the 48-hour notice, for example, would kick in after the tenant has acknowledged receipt of the email?
In other words, until the tenant acknowledges, replies to the email, the 48 hours doesn't
That could prove to be problematic, based on our experience with the code enforcement mailings that we do. We do first-class post, first-class mail as well as certified return mail things. And you'd be amazed at the number of correspondence that we get back that nobody's touched because it has that little city of Tacoma Park thing in the corner. I'm assuming that might also be the case for tenants getting emails from their landlords if they don't want them to come in their apartment or something like that. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
I have another question.
From my experience, both with landlord tenantings and any other legal proceedings, I mean, sometimes there's a statute, for example, the state security deposit statute says that notices have to be by first-class mail. But typically, I think email is much easier for tenants and landlords to prove what was sent and when, because otherwise you have a copy of a letter and the tenant says, I mailed this. But if we have an email from the landlord to the tenant, and usually there's all kinds of back and forth between the landlord and tenant from these email addresses, it's pretty clear that this was a regular avenue of communication, and you see when things were sent. So I think unless the, unless there's a statute that we can't change that says the notice has to be in regular mail or some form other than email, my inclination is to use email because, you know, we have to decide what we believe, you know, whether we believe notice was sent or not, but it's usually better evidence, see an email than a copy of a piece of paper that was supposedly delivered.
You have another question?
Yeah, I guess I have a very fundamental question that comes out of my naivete, and that is, is that this law that we're looking at amending is many pages and it's complex, yet every landlord has a right to- complex, yet every landlord has a right to draft their own lease. A tenant comes into the city of Tacoma Park, they may not even be aware that they are in the city of Tacoma Park, much less that it has unique regulations that's designed to protect them from, say, being in Prince, otherwise in Prince George's or unincorporated I guess my question is, is how do we, how does a tenant know, find out what their rights are when the landlord has no strong particular motivation to inform them? And even if the landlord did, they may not be, the tenant may say, well, this is not something I'm interested in reading and, you know, being a lazy consumer, they may not be that literate, or all kinds of stuff. I mean, it's a very fundamental question, but I apologize for asking it, but I'm just trying to get my hands around how we protect tenants' rights with, I mean, we have, we can have all these law, this law here, which is a good law. But tenants come in all shapes and sizes, and they come from all over the world to live in this place.
Well, I can't promise you that we reach out or reach all of the tenants in Tacoma Park. We do proactively go out into the neighborhoods using the resources available through the capacity building program, particularly Mario Cristaldo, and knock on doors and leave flyers and chat with people and let them know that there is this landlord-tenant office in Tacoma Park, identify issues that may be problematic. And that has been effective. We've also have in the city newsletter whether or not, it should go, actually, it goes to all of the rental properties in Tacoma Park. Our regular tenant landlord mailbox, housing mailbox is what it's called, where it talks about issues that are frequently faced by both landlords and tenants, be it security deposits or extermination, things like that. Landlord-tenant staff is also going to be working more closely with the communication staff to take advantage of some of the social media things that admittedly is just a sort of targeted audience, but it's ongoing efforts to get the word out about what resources are available and what people's rights are. But I wish, if you can figure out a way to get the word out to all of the tenants in Tacoma Park, that would be great.
I'll work on it and call you in the morning.
Thank you.
I mean, I will say, and this isn't the ideal way to get information to people, but if somebody, if a tenant files a complaint with the county because they don't realize they should be dealing with the city, the county does send them, send them back to the right office.
Yeah, I get the picture.
Anything else you need to cover, any direction you need from us?
If I might ask, for the, as you note in the memo, there's a series of work sessions planned on the rest of the sections of Chapter Six. Is there a way you would prefer the information presented to you? Some of these sections will have substantive changes in them because of obsolete language or code requirements, others are going to be fairly straightforward. Do you want us just to touch on the highlights and leave the housekeeping stuff alone? What is easier for you?
I thought the way you did it tonight worked.
Is that okay?
People happy with that?
I'll just remember to cite the actual section number or letter.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is. I would just add that it's extremely helpful for you to identify for us the policy questions right up front. So this whole question around retaliatory evictions and whether we follow county, state to do our own thing, putting those issues right at the top identifies areas where we really need to be thoughtful, particularly thoughtful. So please send that there are more of those issues. That's very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Last chance, going once, going twice. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it.